Good evening. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting of Monday, March 4th, 2019. And we'll start with a prayer by Reverend Hank Rosso.
And forgive me, please, I'll rush out after praying. I've got another meeting they're delaying till 5:45. I'm not that important, but they were kind, so let's look to the Lord in prayer. God, we do thank you that as we gather here together, these council members and our city leaders, Lord, the citizens that are here, and each one in their area of specialty, we thank you also for your presence. God, we pray that you give wisdom and understanding, and that you bring guidance and direction, Lord, as we all understand this one thing we have in common, and that's the love for our community. And we pray that that would unite us and help us to recognize others' perspective as well as our own. And we thank you, Lord, that you had such a passion for cities that you paused at Jerusalem and wept. And so we thank you for your love for Watertown. We pray that you continue to keep your hand on our first responders, those firefighters and paramedics and EMTs, our police officers, and, Lord, these utility workers and those who keep our streets and thoroughfares clean, Lord, keep your hand upon each one of them as it's a precarious time of year to do those things. Keep your hand on their families, Lord, and let them know how much they are appreciated as well. And we thank you for all these things, for it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Okay, thank you. Albertson?
Here.
Bueller?
Here.
Danforth?
Here.
Lalum?
Here.
Manti?
Here.
Roby?
Here.
Solem?
Here.
Thorson?
Here.
Villhauer?
Here.
Y?
Present.
Thank you.
First item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion second? Moved by Bueller, second by Manti. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number two is public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Please come and tell us your name in the microphone. There's a little green light on the microphone, so if that's not on, you might need to touch it. Either one. Okay, it's on.
If I said that one, I may get reading the things and forget what I had to say. My name is Phil Brager. I live up at 2140 Birch Avenue Northeast in Watertown. And my public comment is the problem we're having with the snow. I think the city needs to take a real look at what they're doing on moving the snow and how they're doing it. First of all, you may as well get rid of the snow gates. Because number one, they work, but not when you don't use them right. Right now, it's like a guy taking a gun, a pistol, and looking down the barrel to see if it's loaded and pulling the trigger. Because it works, but not the way it should. If you're going to use them, your maximum effective speed is somewhere between one and a half and slightly under three miles an hour. The way they're used, if they're used properly, is as you approach the approach or the driveway, you rotate your blade slightly back to the left, you drop your gate, you go past, you rotate your, you lift the gate, rotate your blade back, you spill the snow out. If you don't rotate that blade, you're just going to shove snow right over the end. You might as well get rid of it. Right now, at my house, I've had to dig out my mailbox three times with a pick and shovel. I've had it so clean that you could walk up to it summertime driving. The next morning, I came out there and I have to go downtown and get the mail. Now, there's something wrong here. I'm 80 years old, and I'm damn fortunate that I'm of physical condition and health that I can get out and do it. There's people that can't. I've got a neighbor that's taking cancer treatments right now, and he can't, so I'm over helping him out. I was over the other day helping one of our firefighters move his snow out so he could get to it. Is this right? I can tell you one thing, we had our driveways cleaned out. Cleaned out. We didn't blow it, and not one of the neighbors that I saw blew it into the street. We blew it off to the sides. The plows went through. I'd estimate a good seven, eight miles an hour when they went through, throwing snow right over the top of it, never slowed down. Filled everything up. Had somebody right then had to get to a hospital. You couldn't have got out of your driveway after we'd cleaned them, and nor could anybody have gotten in. This is not right. If you're not going to use the damn things, get rid of them. Don't kid ourselves and tell them we're out there. Don't tell us they don't work. Because they do work. But it has to be done the way they were designed. If I was a farmer and I went out here and had a semi, and I pulled up with my combine and dumped 300 bushels on my pickup truck, do you think that would be doing the job? I don't think so. I'd have my grain all over the field. Now, I've grown up, since I grew up in North Dakota, so I know what snow is. I've lived pretty much over the world in the military. And since I got out, I've worked with heavy equipment, industrial equipment, construction equipment, farm equipment, heavy-duty trucks, the whole thing. And the biggest problem we have is not with the piece of equipment. It's with the people who operate it. They are designed to work within a certain envelope. When you don't work within that envelope, you've just wasted one holy heck of a lot of money, because it is not going to perform. So right now, I'm in a position that if I want my mail anymore, I have one alternative. I'm going to have to drive down to the post office and get it. I will not dig it out anymore to have it plugged in the next day. When you spend an hour and a half, two hours with a pick out there and moving it, because it was packed in there that hard from the blade, keep throwing it in there, throwing it in there, and I kept trying to get it out more and more, and finally I said, this is all got to go. I cleaned an area from here to that gentleman sitting over there, so it would slope right in, the mail carrier could pull up. Went out the next morning, it was wider than this desk from where I, not much snow had been rolled in, about this high. I live on the end of the street, and they just brought it right down and rolled it right in there, right in my driveway and on out. Am I complaining? Yes. I am complaining. And I'm complaining for one reason. It doesn't have to be. Your problem is, you're trying to do too much, you've got one of two problems. You're trying to do too much with too little, or you're trying to do too much too quick. And you can't cover, in this kind of conditions, to do the job at six to eight miles an hour using the snow blade or a snow gate. No human being can operate the controls that fast. I can tell you that right now. So, in the future, if I didn't know what's going on now, two months ago, I'd have said, just keep the plow off my street. I'll pack it down where I drive, I can get out of my driveway. So I think you need to look at your priorities. Do you want to perform for citizens in town? Or do you just want to get the damn thing done and go home? That's what it boils down to. If you're not going to do it right, you know, if you're not going to do it fast, but you don't want to do it slow, then for God's sake, don't do it half-fast. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brager. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? All right, seen none, we'll move on. Item number three is approval of the agenda. Sir, moved by Villhauer, second by Roby, I think. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item four is presentation of the preliminary 2018 financial report. And I don't think we need action on this, or do you want? You'll take some action? Okay. Would anyone like to move to approve the preliminary financial report? Manti, second by Bueller. Thank you. Kristin, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. As required, we present the preliminary financials at the first meeting in March, so we are going to cover that. This is a very condensed preliminary report. We do a CAFER, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, following the audit and making sure that everything's in there. So this is just to kind of go over some of the preliminary numbers before that happens. I think what I'll start with is I'll start with our governmental funds, and we'll start in the general fund. I do want to point out, if you look towards the bottom where it shows the increase to decrease in the fund balance, I would like to report that we have an increase of $294,915 to our fund balance. So that is what we like to see. Our revenues came in a little bit, about $600,000 over our 2017 revenues. A few things added up to make that increase. One was the sales tax came in $231,000 over what it did in '17. So that's the one thing I would like to point out for the general fund. Last year, our fund balance only increased by about $16,000. So '18 is looking very good. We like to see that. When we switch over to the capital improvement fund, it doesn't look as good, but there's some reasons for that. We actually decreased our fund balance $1.9 million, but I want to point out, there's a couple factors that played into that. We did carry over about $2.2 million of projects from '17 into '18, and a lot of those projects were completed in '18. So in '17, we ended up having an increase of our fund balance of about 1.3. So when you kind of look at that, it's a pretty good wash. The one thing that I will say that happened in the capital improvement fund that wasn't budgeted, it wasn't planned, was we did purchase the land. That was about $630,000, $640,000. So if you kind of take into consideration the timing of our capital as it flows through, that's what can account for this. Like I said, we took on quite a bit of '17 projects that were then completed in '18, and then the purchase of the land. All in all, though, that too had, of course, it receives the same one penny as the general fund for the sales tax, so that was good. When we look at the other governmental funds, it's kind of really condensed. It doesn't show a lot, but, because that includes all of the non-major special revenue, that's the parking wreck, that's the wellness center, all the TIFs, the capital projects, the geo-bond fund. So that's a very condensed version of all those together. I would like to point out, though, in looking at the statements for those non-major special revenue funds, they all had a positive to their fund balance, except for the casualty reserve, which is very minimal. But otherwise, the parking wreck is looking at an increase to their fund balance of about $190,000. And we know, too, that from John Small's last report on the wellness center, it is looking like that'll have a fund balance increase of about $195,000. So, all in all, good for the governmental funds. And then the next section that we look at is the enterprise funds. They're again really condensed. We go through and we do the comprehensive annual financial report. But all of the enterprise funds are looking healthy as well. Our sewer, airport, and our solid waste all had increases to their fund balance as well. Then the last section is what we're required to provide, too, and that is where all of our cash is sitting. As you can see, Great Western holds the highest amount, that's our checking account. And then the rest of these are all of our investments that we have, that we go out for bids for throughout the year. So if there's any questions, I can try to answer them. Otherwise, like I said, this is preliminary, and we will be putting the CAFER together here. We're in the process, so.
Thank you, Kristin. Anyone have, Councilman Roby?
Kristin, would you take just a minute to talk about the depository accounts? I think when the general public sees $61 million, they tend to get wide-eyed. I just, would you, if you would, please, just talk what that's there for, why it's in reserve, and just give us that overview?
Yep, I can do that. So yeah, it does look like a significant portion of money. I will say, too, that do take into account that this is for the city of Watertown and municipal utilities as well. This is not just city of Watertown separately, as far as funds. I know that's been asked a lot, why such a high cash balance? But when you do look at the financial statements, at the bottom of the governmental funds, you can see where we talk about our non-spendable, our restricted, our assigned and unassigned. Not all of our money can we just use it for anything. When you look at, a good one is to look at the capital improvement fund. Five, about 5.2 million of that is restricted right off the bat, and that's our debt. We have certain requirements where we have to set aside a certain amount of cash to pay for our debt. So that can't be used except for that purpose. The assigned portion, some of that is, if you'll know that during our budgeting process, we do our long-term capital, that is us restricting some of those dollars to keep back for our projects that come down, so we don't have to bond. So we hold back some of our cash for those reasons as well. So really, in the general fund, if you want to look at how much cash we really have that is what we call unassigned, we have $6.8 million is all we have that is unassigned for any other purpose.
Thank you, Councilman Villhauer.
Kristin, these are preliminary numbers. We've got to go through the audits yet, finish up the CAFER. But you're not anticipating, if history bears out, you're not anticipating any adjustments to speak of to these numbers?
No, I do not see any significant. If anything, we might see it a little bit in the enterprise funds. They're the ones that have the most, that kind of deal with the depreciation expense and stuff like that. But as far as governmental, no, these are pretty close.
Councilman Danforth?
We have departmental reserve funds, reserves, correct? Why, without a very specific intent on where those dollars are spent, why do we have departmental reserves versus just a general fund reserve that could be used in the event that a department needs funding? Does that make sense? Why are we doing that? We've got pockets of reserves.
Well, really, there's no departments outside of the parking wreck. But the general fund has, no departments have their own reserves. That is all into just the general fund. The parking wreck does have a couple reserves. The zoo has some restricted cash. The golf course has some restricted cash. But other than that, no, the general funds don't necessarily have their own reserve. If I can go into some detail on the general fund, the only real restrictions in the general fund are we have to hold $50,000 for the cemetery, and then we have some of our, the cable TV that we hold. And our big one is our capital outlay. There again, some of the departments have some really big equipment in the general fund. A lot of the street department equipment is around $300,000 to $400,000. And we do set aside some money so that we're kind of, but there's no actual restriction. That's just us ourselves. But I don't know if that kind of answers it, or?
Well, so what you're saying is, the parking wreck department is the only one that really has the reserves.
By department, yes.
By department.
Yep.
So if I budget, I'm just going to pick a number. And I'm going to use a couple examples, and they're both within parking wreck. Let's say I am the Prairie Lakes Wellness Center, and we make $195,000. You know, our goal there was to make that operation self-sufficient, so that we wanted to attain a reserve specifically for buying replacement equipment, so that that's where those dollars came from in the budget cycle. But if I am someplace that's not making money, how do I get a reserve? Do I over-budget? Let's say I budget a million dollars and I only spend $950,000. Does that $50,000? That we budgeted over, I'll let you say, I'm just going to pick one, and I'm making this up. The golf course. Golf course budgets a million dollars. They only threw it at the end of the year, they only spent $950,000, so they got $50,000. Where does that $50,000 go?
That would sit in the parking wreck fund.
Their reserve fund.
Fund balance. Yep, the fund balance, yep. But it's kind of, it's not really reserved. It's a fund balance. It's kind of like, basically, if you don't use your money, it just stays there. So we don't always place restrictions on it. Basically, we budget. Any of your expenditures that aren't used, you just drop them back into the fund balance. It's our excess. So like, that's when I talked about the $294,000. That in the general fund is going to just sit back into the unreserved fund balance. So that's going to be that money now that the general fund has to use.
So how does the golf course, if it doesn't make money, how does it obtain a fund balance?
We have a couple different journal entries that we do. The golf course sets aside money based off of when it does make money. There's a formula that it actually can create its own restricted cash, and that's by doing a calculation at the end of the year. And those years when it does make a profit, we do take a portion of that profit and we set it aside for the golf course. And that's the same way that the zoo is. There's a couple specific departments within the parking wreck fund that do that. They have a restricted cash. And if you do remember the last, when Jay and Terry were here, and they wanted to purchase the mower for the park, they talked about that they would be using the $45,000, and then they'd be asking the park fund to use the rest. And that would be that situation where they had used their restricted cash to purchase part of that mower. Yep.
Anyone else? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Kristin. Item five is the second reading of ordinance number 19-01, amending the district zoning map of the city of Watertown, South Dakota, for property generally located north of Fourth Avenue Southwest and south of Second Avenue Southwest, along the west side of Highway 20, and legally described as Lot 1 and Lot 2 of WDA second edition upon platting. So I'm going to look for a motion second for approval, and then I will open the public hearing.
Move.
Moved by Albertson, second by Y. And I'll open the public hearing and ask Heath to tell a little more about this.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. If I could have Pete pull up my screen for me, please. Thank you, Pete. General vicinity here, as the mayor described, we're on the west side of Highway 20. This entire parcel is currently one lot. And this zoning map amendment, this before the council this evening on second reading, would effectively more or less make a correction that would line up the zoning with the subsequent action item on tonight's council agenda for the re-subdivision of that one lot into lots one and two of WDA second edition. This little portion here will become C3 to go with the rest of the portion of the lot that's going to remain C3 that abuts Highway 20. And this little portion down here would become R3 to become part of the R3 lot that has residential development already on it. Again, this is the second reading tonight, and the subsequent action item is the plat that would create these two lots.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak about this issue? Seen none, I will close the public hearing and ask the council if they have any questions or comments. None, then I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number six is approval of resolution number 19-10, approving and authorizing the final plat for the re-subdivision of Lot 1 of WDA addition to the municipality of Watertown and the county of Cottington, South Dakota, subject to all planning requirements. I'll look for a motion second for approval. Moved by Villhauer, second by Bueller. And Heath, will you tell us about this, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, Pete, I don't know if you have my screen up. This is the, again, the current lot that would be re-subdivided into two lots. This lot line would run perpendicular to these lot lines. Let me see if I can find the accurate map here. Here's a copy of the actual plat. So you can see that that lot line is in close proximity to the current zoning line that runs through here now. So again, this is kind of more or less a cleanup item that the owner's wanting to accomplish in not only re-subdividing this lot into two, but also making the zoning correction that was previously approved.
Okay, so this was one lot. Now we're making two, and we're putting the lot line approximately where the zoning line is.
Yeah, that's correct. This lot line on this plat matches the location of the zoning line that we just approved on the previous action.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
Which I would add is in line with the zoning regulations, that we have continuous zoning. We don't have split zoning on any one lot. We have continuous zoning throughout all the lot's boundaries, which this helps accomplish. And the previous action helps to accomplish.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number seven is repeal or carryover of capital outlay appropriations from the 2018 fiscal year, resolution number 19-12. Look for a motion second for approval. Moved by Lalum.
Second.
Second by Y. And Kristin, will you please tell us about this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Section 5.07 of the Home Rule Charter allows for the city to basically carry over any capital expenditures that were not completed during that budget cycle and carry them over to the next year. So that's what we're looking at right now. The numbers in front of you would be 2018 capital expenditures that had these budget dollars, and due to timing, due to something else, they weren't completed. And we are going to move them over to the 2019 budget so that the departments have the opportunity to finish these projects or purchase the equipment. I can kind of go over them, or I don't know if it's kind of, it's a little bit straightforward. If there's any specific questions on the items, too, I can kind of handle it that way. The general fund is going to increase for some computer equipment, and then the street department had a loader that was ordered but didn't make it here in time. So there again, it's kind of the timing issues that you're looking at with any of these. Otherwise, like I said, it's, this has also been given to all the departments. They all have the opportunity to let me know which projects, equipment hasn't been purchased, and then we look at the budgets and make sure that these are the dollar amounts that they have available to carry over. So if there's specific questions, I can answer them. Otherwise, what will happen is, once this is approved, this will get dumped into the 19 budget along with the other numbers, so.
All right, any questions or comments? Councilman Villhauer?
Kristin, not the carryover, but the flip side, was there anything that had been budgeted that was not expended that were, that's being repealed, or anything significant?
Not really, not of any significant. We had a couple projects, which was always good when they come in under, so that's nice, those values just go back into the, kind of the fund balance. But otherwise, no, there wasn't anything that, I guess the only significant one that kind of did have, the Splash Park at this point, we're carrying over the $10,000. That's what I, my understanding is, that's what's kind of left over of the current bills to pay for engineering and design of the Splash Park. But otherwise, nope, that's it.
Any other questions? Councilman Albertson?
Kristin, I have a question. Is there any of this money that can be used for, other than capital improvement? Is it, when it's coded for capital improvement?
Yep.
It can't be used for general fund expenditures? None of that can be?
Yep, that's right. According to the Home Rule Charter and also state law, is any of our operating personnel expenses, those are not even considered when we do this. The only thing that we can carry over is those items that were identified for capital. We also put some restrictions on them. We don't allow you to carry over funds for a project that is different than what the intent of the dollars were for. So everything you see before you is what it originally was budgeted for, and it's a is if, um, we never started the project, but we know we're gonna do it the following year, then we carry it over. But no, these are only capital expenditures.
Thank you, other questions or comments? See none, I'll look for action, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number eight is approval of resolution number nineteen dash thirteen, expressing intent to enter into a lease agreement with Nathan Reichling for city-owned farmland adjacent to the Watertown Regional landfill. I'll look for a motion and second for approval. Move by Bueller. Second by Lalum. Um, this sounds sneakily familiar. Matt, you wanna explain, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, uh, if this item and the next one look familiar, it's because they are identical to the action we took last week, or excuse me, the last council meeting. Uh, we had some, uh, just a miscommunication, and we failed to, uh, get the notice of public hearing in the paper in time. And so, uh, essentially, we're taking the same action at this meeting that we took the previous meeting. So what this is, is a resolution of intent to enter into a lease with Nathan Reichling at the eighty point two six acres, uh, located adjacent to the landfill. Uh, it's for a, uh, it will be a, uh, three-year term, renewable for three additional three-year terms. And, uh, this action tonight is simply the resolution of intent. Uh, we'll publish the notice then later this week, and at the next council meeting, the, uh, actual lease will be in front of you for action, and there'll be a public hearing prior to taking action on the lease.
Gotta dot your i's and cross your t's, any questions or comments?
If we took action on this, do we have to reverse something from last week?
No, so what, the only thing that's changed is the, are the dates, so the previous, um, resolution that was approved uh, indicated that the the hearing was going to be on today's date. So this, this version is edited, and it says the hearing will take place, uh, on March eighteenth. Uh, in our permanent record book, we're resolution nineteen oh eight, I believe it is, uh, it'll just indicate, see resolution nineteen thirteen.
All right. Other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item nine is approval of resolution number nineteen dash fourteen, expressing intent to enter into a lease agreement with Gerald Kususki for city-owned real property located at the Watertown Regional Airport. Look for a motion, second for approval. Move by Albertson, second by Lalum, and Matt, you wanna just briefly remind us what this was?
Yes, Mayor, thank you, so, um, as with the last, the previous item, uh, this is the exact same resolution except for the dates, uh, from the previous meeting. And what this is, is a, uh, ground leased for Mr. Kususki. He owns a a hangar at the airport, and we leased to him the ground underneath it. It'll be a twenty-five-year term, renewable for an additional ten years. And the lease will be in front of you at the next meeting for action.
Thank you, any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number ten is authorization for the mayor to sign an agreement with connections for the employee assistance program. Look for a motion and second for approval. Move by Bueller. Second by Vilhauer, and Kristen, please tell us about this.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, two meetings ago, Audra with the HR and then Don with the fire department had come before you, and they presented the RFP results for this. Um, now, we've had a chance, Matt has reviewed the contract as well as Audra, to make sure everything's in there. That was, um, in the RFP, and I think everything's there, and it looks good. So this would be to sign into the agreement with them for the employee assistance program.
Thank you, any questions or comments? See none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number eleven is old business, sorry, Councilman Roby?
Uh, snow removal's been the hot topic as of late, how are we doing budget-wise on snow removal this year?
I haven't looked at it yet. I can, I can look at that, and I can provide that to, at the next meeting. Yep.
I think it, chances are, we haven't blown through our two thousand and nineteen budget because there's still winter at the end of the year in this budget, but we're probably blowing through our allotment.
Councilman Danforth?
Also on snow removal. Well, actually, uh, my, my paper box got smashed, but that's okay. Um, I got a phone call from an individual, and I really wasn't sure how to respond to this. And Mayor, you and I talked, I think it was last week, about what the city's position is in regards to snow removal and cleaning of sidewalks and such, and we do need to maintain that. I do believe, for the most part, the, uh, enforcement officers have been giving out warnings, and really not a lot of fines per se, or notices accordingly. But the question that was posed to me was this, person owns a lot, owns a land, it's got sidewalk on it. There's nothing to this side, nothing to this side, that it goes anywhere, there's no sidewalk, there's nothing. There's no handicap access to that portion of the sidewalk, there's no, uh, driveway that goes there. And his question, he says, can I just not do my snow on that portion of his sidewalk? He said, it doesn't go anywhere, nobody can use it, but he gets notices saying, clean your sidewalk. How do we deal with that? I mean, it, I'll be honest with you, it doesn't make any sense to make him clean a sidewalk that goes nowhere, no one's gonna use it. How do we do that? Is there a way for us to handle those types of situations?
Well, I, I think I would, um, defer to our city attorney to say, if 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 we want to exclude certain sections of sidewalk from our ordinance requiring owners to clear the snow off of them, if that's an idea that we should pursue.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, I know that we were gonna discuss this at the last Public Works Agenda, uh, Public Works meeting, and we ran out of time, but currently, our ordinance is pretty straightforward, if there's a sidewalk, it needs to be cleared. But, uh, it's certainly something that, if the council, uh, deems that to be desirable, we could put in some exceptions, or, um, you know, there's all sorts of language you could put in to carve out, like I said, exceptions for certain instances where it may not be, uh, necessary for somebody to clean their sidewalk from, from the public's point of view.
The individual was, it, it, older individual, um, paying for this because he's not doing it himself. And he said, I'm paying to get this done, and and it it's never gonna get used because, you know, in the summer, it would get used, people walk in the grass, they'll walk on the sidewalk, and they'll continue. But he said, nobody is gonna come, he said, I don't even have to have, I don't even gotta dig away for them to get to the sidewalk because there's no entrance to the sidewalk. He said, so why should I be cleaning that and spending the money to clean that? And I, I can't argue with him, I really can't, it's a sidewalk to nowhere, so to speak. No way to get in, no way to get out, but yet, he's required to clean off the sidewalk. I think we should look at instances where that occurs, find a way, in our language, ordinance language, that enables us to not enforce that, those scenarios where, in this case, sidewalks to nowhere, just doesn't, it just doesn't make any sense. So it'd be nice to see some language that, that goes in that direction. I don't blame him, I didn't know what to tell him, I'll be honest with you, I just told him, I'm going to the council meeting, and I'll ask.
Right, and I, I think you just gotta be careful applying a blanket statement that might, um, mess things up, but, Councilman Manti?
Um, I'm aware of a couple other places like that, how do those happen? I guess I'm just curious, is it because of a development requirement of that plot, and then, nothing happens on either side?
The sidewalks are required at the time that the roadway is constructed, and we often, almost always, defer and and allow the developer to defer to the person that develops the land into a house or a business, or whatever. So technically, we can order a path, any place there's not a connection, and we have done that and on certain cases, and just to connect the dots so that it isn't a sidewalk to nowhere. So that's one option, is we can not say, oh, you don't have to clear your sidewalk, but say to the neighbor who has an obligation to build a sidewalk, if we pull the trigger, we'd pull the trigger and say, okay, you gotta build your sidewalk so that this is continuous, otherwise, it's pointless. So, um, Councilman Vilhauer?
We, we need to be careful if we start making exceptions, I acknowledge that, we're going on a slippery slope. Uh, but by the same token, I, I, I look out where, we live out in the Summerwood area, in our neighborhood, uh, a lot of people got or, got, got notices out there. And again, even the summertime, very few of those sidewalks are used out there. It is something that I would like us, I, I realize this winter, uh, hopefully, is gonna get behind us sooner rather than later. Uh, so nothing's probably gonna come of it this year, but I would like to take a, take a look at this, uh, moving forward because we, we do need to make some exceptions, we start to go down that, that road, I don't know where we stop, but it is something that I would like us to take a look at, because, uh, again, I've got a lot of neighbors out there that, I got a lot of phone calls here, uh, middle of January, uh, that, uh, first time in twenty years was ever an, an issue that came forward. Uh, but again, I'm concerned about starting to make exceptions, but I would like us to at least have the conversation, uh, coming in the neck, going into next winter.
In your case, stopping, making exceptions, because it hasn't been enforced in your neighborhood in the past, and has been enforced in other neighborhoods. Councilman Albertson?
In Mike's question, doesn't that, doesn't somebody have to complain about that? Isn't that what triggers the, it seemed to me like that's what the enforcement officer told me, because I asked about the one out there, how that ever came up after twenty years, and he said, well, somebody would've complained to him about it, and then he follows up on the ordinance.
Well, once he, when he's in an area, if he's, he goes through everywhere around, he isn't just gonna give the person that was, the complaint was about, if their neighbor has the same situation.
But in Mike's case, the one he's bringing up there, for the ordinance officer to go out and do anything, I would suggest somebody would have to say, do you know that Jim's got that, and he doesn't take care of it, and so?
Then it may have been, like the, the mayor said, it might have been, he was in that area anyway and went by and knows there's a sidewalk there and went, I, I don't know.
Or didn't even get a ticket or or any, or warning, just knows he has to remove the snow.
I got the impression he had gotten one warning earlier on, but, you know, I'll give you an example in front of my home. If you go to the south, my lot ends to the county, there's nothing there, we can't, we're not gonna mandate sidewalk in there. There's no, no exit to the road, you know, and, and, uh, I gotta be honest, right now, I'm not, gosh, don't send him over to my house. But right now, I'm not cleaning that part of my sidewalk because it doesn't make any sense. It's, it, there'd be a four-foot wall at the end of my sidewalk. I am, I'm guilty, but, um, but, that, that's an example too, of where there really are reasons for exceptions. Because ideally, realistically, I should be blowing that off.
Councilman Manti?
Um, I guess we're all in agreement of exceptions versus slippery slopes, but I think your point that may have gotten kind of missed in the conversation was the path of, you know, um, and I, our ward, of course, is very, very old, and so I can think of three areas where we have sidewalk, no sidewalk, sidewalk, no sidewalk, and, um, so it would really be nice if I didn't have to go out in the street, then go back up onto the sidewalk, and then go out into the street and go back up onto the sidewalk, and I don't know how to fix that, but, um, because you can't make somebody snow blow grass, but you can require a path, do you know what I'm saying? So, so I don't know how we would do that, but we are having people going out into the road and then back up onto the sidewalk and out into the road, so that, the path thing is a real issue.
It is, and we have had complaints, if we do get a complaint, um, and we follow through in accordance with the ADA, and we order sidewalks in, and we've, we've done it many times throughout our history, and it's, it's our obligation to see that we, uh, follow through on that sort of thing. Certainly, if someone is wanting to walk on the sidewalk, they have a right to, and we need to provide that path. And our ordinances spell out that the property owner who owns that adjacent property is responsible for installing and maintaining the sidewalk. So people have gotten those notices in the past.
Be okay if they snow blow the grass, but, you know, to make a path.
Right, and there are some areas where people do that, and, and I don't think that's a bad idea if you, especially if you live next to a highway and you have a curbside sidewalk, and every time they plow the road, that piles up on your sidewalk, that still is your responsibility to remove that snow, even though the plow put it there, and our street department is going to try and come and clear it off when they get to it, still, the property owner's responsibility to remove it. And some people actually do make a path in the soft snow, um, in their yard, so that their mail is delivered. And because the mail personnel are not going to climb through mountains of snow to deliver mail, they just won't deliver it. And, and that's, um, I mean, I've experienced that myself. My mail hasn't been delivered, if the plow has left a windrow next to my mailbox, that's my responsibility to remove that, and the consequence is, mail may not be delivered.
Councilman Roby?
I would just add that there are many mornings, driving early, I see young school kids walking the street.
Right, and you, you may not be aware that they're using it because they come and go quickly. Councilman Lalum?
I actually got two questions, um, how is our snow piles? I mean, are we filling up to the point where we're gonna have issues if we get a lot of snow come later?
The issues that we're having are that we're running out of space, and we've had to seek extra spaces, which is somewhat problematic, I mean, Heath went over the MS four program. Our snow holes are actually designed to collect runoff and pollutants that are carried in snow, and when we start depositing our snow elsewhere, they don't have those protections. And so we don't like to do that unless we have to, and this year, we have to. So I, um, I'm not concerned about, um, flooding from it or that sort of thing, because it generally melts pretty slow, a snow pile. But if you're, if you mean running out of space, yes, yes.
My other question is, are roads are getting narrower? Is there any, any way that we can fix, I don't know if it's possible?
There is a way, if you have enough time between snow events, you can come by, and they do. The, I mean, the street department is working five days a week from, you know, a full day, whether it's snowing or not, and they're maintaining the corner piles and widening the street from curb to curb wherever they can. But this winter, they haven't been able to keep up because it's just snowing one after another. We've had some events that last several days where it doesn't stop snowing, and it's all they can do just to keep the emergency routes open. And so, yes, they, they do do that, and that, now that we're having more hours of sunshine and the sun is higher in the sky, it's, uh, helping that, you know, we'll have some melting, even if it's not above freezing, we'll get some melting and evaporation this time of year, so hopefully, that won't be an issue.
Yeah, there's just a few of them that are really narrow.
Yep, they're doing their best, I think they're really actually doing a great job there, um, coming up with some ingenious efficiencies, I think. Yes.
I guess I just wanna add then, you know, you're talking about snow and snow and snow. Um, over the last week, I just got done driving through three states, you know, Wisconsin, Minnesota, and South Dakota, and I can tell you that we're not unique, and that the snow is, removal is crap in Montevideo. And it's, you know, I mean, I can name every single city that I had to go through is having piles of snow on corners where there's bad, you know, sightlines, um, slippery areas, uh, just, so it's just been that kind of winter, and it's been that kind of winter for everybody. So I just wanted to share that there's three other states kind of in a row with us that are having the same, same issues we're talking about right now.
Thank you for pointing that out, Beth, appreciate it. Anyone else? Okay, I think that was old business, is there any other old business? How about new business?
Mayor, I do have something.
Councilman Bueller?
Just, um, could, maybe you could update us on where we're at with, uh, contingency planning or considerations for flood issues that we might run into? If you could maybe update us as to where we're at, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, okay, this is a unique year, um, we do have a lot of snow, and people are worried about flooding, and there are, um, a lot of people who are keeping tabs on that, professionals, the National Weather Service is, um, keeping track of how much snow is accumulating, emergency management for our county. There is a, um, what we call an incident command setup for the case that we would have flooding. So there are individuals with defined jobs in case we have flooding, they're ready to mobilize. We've identified where our resources are if we should need them, phone numbers are updated, um, people change over time, new names are put in the New names are put in the slots of who does what. And we're essentially ready to go in case we do have flooding just because there's a higher potential this year than there has been for some time. So while I don't think that we're going to have flooding, I'm not to the point of being overly concerned. It is being watched by everybody that you hope is watching. And if we do need to take action, action will be taken. So thank you for bringing that up. Any other new business or old business? Excuse me? Councilwoman Albertson?
Well, update us a little bit on the, I asked you that the other day about the ice rinks and where we are with that plan.
Okay, we, we're still having discussions with the users and, and the whole situation that developed with the ice arena in Brookings. It is of great and alarming concern to everyone involved. We do not want to make the same mistake. And so we're talking about that. I had some conversations with professionals that are helping Brookings. We're gonna go look when they, essentially what happened in Brookings is there was a flaw that caused a problem that could result in a catastrophic failure at their ice arena, which is costing them over $3 million to fix. And this is not just an upgrade to make their somewhat old facility look nicer. Their facility isn't that old. This is a problem, and they have to fix it. It's in the flooring. So the flooring is higher on one side than it is on the other, and that's not good when you have ice. So we're watching that, and we're very carefully considering that. But aside from that, we are looking at a potential agreement, which the user groups would sign to commit to helping to pay for the increased costs of a two-sheet ice arena. I want that before I ask the council to go forward and request bids. Because this new facility will cost a lot more to operate and maintain. And so I think it's only fair that the users contribute. Now, they've not signed anything. There isn't an official document. We're working out the problems with that right now and getting it to where it's how we want it to read. And after that point, I think things will probably move pretty quickly with a recommendation from the committee on what to build and, and where, and the timeline, the cost, all of that. And it's just not quite to that point yet. But there will be some, I'm hoping to have a public meeting before the council's asked to act, so that you're not just creating controversy by a council meeting.
The interesting thing, I talked to one of the moms that has hockey player, and she's really involved in it. And she said that the city of Brookings is sick about that $3 million situation. And she was telling me about it. But she said, the city of Brookings also said, you know, those two rinks draw so many people and so much money into Brookings that we are more than happy to get it fixed because we don't want to lose our spot in tournaments and all those things because they draw, they said, we clearly make more than $3 million on, and I don't know what the timeframe was, but they weren't, she said they weren't concerned. They were concerned, but we're more than happy to move forward to fix it because it draws in so much money for their community.
Right. And we are one of very few communities that doesn't have a two-sheet ice arena. Most communities in our part of the country do. So, you know, we'll be having that debate soon, I'm hoping. Is that satisfactory?
I have a question.
Yes.
You know, I would assume that they have concrete floors in this facility in Brookings. Is that right?
I would assume so too. I don't know that for a fact. Do you know? They do?
Okay. I mean, have we considered sand at all? Do you know?
I don't know.
The Sioux Falls, I know, when we toured-
Do you know, Adam?
-that facility, that was, two sheets out of the three were, were sand because they were year-round. I think they use it for year-round ice.
Yeah, they talked about it, you know, there are some other issues with using sand as far as the pipes getting hit and things of that nature because it is, they tend to be a little bit higher. And the concrete, obviously, is, once it's in, it's in, you can use it for year-round. And we're not talking about having both sheets be nine or 10 months. One of them's gonna be less than that. So if you don't concrete that one, you can't use that for anything else. So if you do sand, and then the discussion that we had when the gentleman came from Minneapolis was that, you know, you can do it, you can always put concrete in later, but typically, it's, it's cheaper and it's easier to do once it's done at first. So seems to be a safer bet. They, they probably are wishing they had sand, but they, they had other issues that came up, so.
Right. Right. Anything else? No other new business? Any liaison member reports? None? All right, we do have a reason to go into executive session tonight in order to discuss and consult with legal counsel on contractual matters. And we do not expect to take action upon coming out. So I'll look for a motion and a second for going into executive session. Moved by Bueller, second by Y. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.